Welcome, everybody, to the regular council meeting with closed session Wednesday, November the 18th, being held virtually. For those in the audience, this is being broadcast on Rogers Channel 53 and streamed. You can also view it on our website. Post subsequent to the meeting, should you choose to do so. I'd like to just start off by saying that there are two public meetings this evening. The first public meeting is regarding a zoning bylaw amendment application for 808 Birchwood Drive. The second public meeting is regarding a development charges bylaw amendment. If you'd like to speak to either of these matters, we ask that you contact the clerk at 705. 526-4275, extension 2208. Prior to the commencement of the public meetings, the number to call us all will also be displayed on Rogers. Once the meetings have commenced, we will a brief minute or two for every for anyone who is attempting to call in to reach the clerk. So that number again is 705-526-4275, extension 2208. And please try and make your calls prior to when we start to commence the public meetings a little further on in the evening. At this juncture, I would also like to acknowledge the traditional land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is traditional tree and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people, now known as the Chipewa Tri Council comprised of Osley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five and treaty 16 and included within the Williams treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. So at this juncture, I would like to ask council if there are any declarations of pecuniary interest. Seeing none. I'd like to just ask that everybody observe a moment of silence. Unfortunately, we had a resident die today at Midland Hospital from complications of COVID. So our hearts go out to and our prayers go out to the family and also to all, I think, all those people in the local area of the country and even globally who are being affected by this COVID outbreak. So if you would just join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. We were in closed session earlier this evening, and I have a motion arising from the closed session, and that motion is as follows. Moved by councillor Maine, seconded by councillor Downer, that confidential staff report CSR 2020-43, Fire Management Shared Services Agreement Extension dated November 18th, 2020 be received for information and that council authorizes the extension of the current agreement between the town of Penetangwishing and the town of Midland for fire management shared services to December 31, 2021, and that the clerk be directed to present the appropriate bylaw for consideration and adoption at a subsequent council meeting, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement once the applicable bylaw has been adopted. So council, you've heard the motion. Comments or questions regarding this? Seeing none, then all in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you, council. I now have a motion moved by council begin seconded by councillor Oshinsky that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for November 18th, 2020, approved as amended. Comments or questions with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, and that carries. Moved by deputy mayor Ross. And seconded by councillor Prost, that the items and related recommendations contained within the November 18th, 2020 consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted. Does anybody have comments around this motion and the contents they're in? Seeing not, oh, councillor Maine, sorry about that. Me to jump the gun on you.
Oh, thank you, worship. I followed up with staff, but I thought I'd mention it here on the traffic bylaw. It's great to see we just always update our bylaws to, you know, include update fees and whatever. I just got a question around enforcement on truck routes. Goods movement is a really important thing. We have lots of factories in town. We have lots of stores, grocery stores. Trucks are flying around all over the place. A lot of residents have expressed concern, some trucks not driving on the designated truck routes. And so as we're talking about this bylaw, I just wanted to inquire with staff about what are some of the tools that we have, you know, for enforcement, encouragement, awareness to address that one particular issue of trucking in town. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And would anybody on staff like to respond to the councillor's inquiry? Mr. Campbell, please.
Through your worship to councillor Maine and the rest of council, enforcement of traffic is always a challenge. You either see it or you don't. We encourage residents, if they're seeing it, to call the non-emergency line at OPP. And they will track the number of calls they get on certain hotspots in the town. So that's how the OPP try to get guidance where to put their speed traps and other enforcement. So certainly residents should, you know, call OPP the non-emergency line. And for trucks in particular, again, it's, you know, we don't have enforcement staff out there 24 hours a day watching it. So we rely on the OPP at this point. Signage is in place. It's the same as any other traffic sign when people aren't obeying the traffic signs. It's, yes, we could do some education. It's just a real, it's a real difficult enforcement issue as same as speeding and everything else. The bylaw is in place. The bylaw has enforcement. I guess if council wishes in the future to increase the fees and fines for for those violations, that could be considered as increased deterrent for enforcement. And but if then any change to that fee, it's a short wording, and that has to go to the province for approval. So we, council isn't on their own to approve those fees. We do need provincial concurrence with whatever fee we choose as short wording fines.
And thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you so much. Just a quick follow up on that note about other things, Highway Traffic Act related stuff. I know, speaking with staff over the past, blocking, obstructing a lane or obstructing a bike lane is not necessarily listed under our bylaw, but it is under the Highway Traffic Act. Because I was looking at somebody, the inquiry is what is the fee if somebody blocks a bike lane? And I believe that's not listed under this, that's listed under the Highway Traffic Act. Is that, is that accurate, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Campbell.
I'd have to check with bylaw enforcement OPP. I'm not familiar with that offense.
All right. Well, thank you.
I might add that the matter of HTA offenses came up at the police service board meeting. And the superintendent indicated that as we start to put some of the other programming in place that takes some of the other calls for service related to mental health issues and distress, domestic distress issues. They can then refocus their resources on HTA, and that they do plan to do that. Councillor Gordon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I noticed in there that there appears to be maybe an updated definition of electric or motor assisted bicycle. Is that effectively the e-bike? And if it is, any idea when staff will have the report on the review of e-bikes operating on our trails and roads in the community that council authorized probably about a year ago now?
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, worship and councillor Gordon. Yes, the inclusion of e-bikes in the Highway Traffic Act was and the ability for municipalities to enforce new rules on e-bikes came into effect only in the last year and a bit. A Monprey before he left was, you know, reviewing and looking at what other municipalities were doing because to make sure when we do bring a new bylaw in front of council that it will succeed if we ever get challenges. So we are waiting to see what some of the other municipalities were doing. Our new solicitor, Tina, she certainly will be reviewing what other municipalities are doing. And we plan in the winter time to bring forward a bylaw for council's consideration.
Mr. Campbell, I think I would also add too, again, coming back from the police service board, the matter of e-bikes was raised. Inspector Graham indicated that he would be working with community groups with municipal staff to look at what elements were enforceable from a community-wide perspective as opposed to a particular trail or location and build on the the work that Mr. Singh and Mr. Koko will be doing with with staff internally in terms of looking at other bylaws. So there is a focus. It's not been, it's not to councillor Gordon's question. It's not been forgotten. It's it's more of a sense of prudence in terms of getting it right for the community as a whole and within the the powers that the provinces allowed us to operate within. Councillor.
If I could just follow up, I didn't want that question to sound like I'm, you know, got it out for e-bike operators. Like many, almost everything, the vast majority of operators do so lawfully, safely, and with care and caution. The only real issue here is, you know, for the the small minority that that don't and the fear for safety on on trails and paths specifically, not so much the roads and sidewalks where they wouldn't belong anyway. That for the few operators don't seem to be operating safely, and unfortunately, that's kind of the need for the harmonization of our of our rules so that you don't come to the end of one community and roll over that invisible line. All of a sudden, there's a new set of rules that apply or don't apply to you. So just to be fair to all the operators out there that do so safely and, you know, effectively with courtesy on the roads and trails. This is my question is not meant to be antagonistic or implying that we should somehow crack down on entire all e-bike operators with the same brush.
Councillor. Just for a point of clarification for people watching, if they haven't seen the agenda. What, there are three reports that are contained within the consent agenda. First deals with traffic bylaw, which we've been discussing in the last few minutes. The second is the appointment of an external auditor for the town for, I think, a period of three, three years. Yeah, 2020 to 2022. And then finally, a temporary borrowing bylaw which allows staff to meet the cash needs through borrowings until we get into passing appropriate bylaws under the new budget and in the new fiscal year. So that's what's in there other than the council information packages which are available through the agenda and I believe on the website as well. So just that's what this has been approved this evening to date up to the moment. And my next motion will move us into committee of the whole, moved by a deputy mayor Ross, seconded by councillor. I need, I need I need people to say yea or nay on the consent agenda. So I'll ask, are you? Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. Next motion moved by councillor Downer, seconded by councillor Gordon, the council resolved into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to committee of the whole on this beautiful evening. We have no presentations, but we do have two public meetings. So first public meeting is a public meeting for 808 Birchwood Drive. I would like to call the public meeting to order. This public meeting is being held pursuant to the planning act to consider an application for amendment to town's zoning bylaw respecting 808 Birchwood Drive. In accordance with the planning act, if a person does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or make a written submission before the bylaws passed or an approval given, you will not be entitled to appeal the decisions to the local planning appeal tribunal. You may not be able, you will not be added as a party to the hearing on the appeal to the LPAT unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there's a reasonable ground to do so. This is your opportunity to speak, and council encourages to do so. The perfect purpose of this public meeting is to hear from residents and to seek clarity on the proposed bylaw. I will ask the town executive director of Community and Development Services, Mr. Elliott, to introduce the applicant, confirm notification, and to make and to note any correspondence received. Mr. Elliott?
Good evening, and through the chair, members of council and members of the public. I believe that the clerk is going to help navigate through the PowerPoint presentation. If if Madam Clerk could load that, that would be amazing.
Now, Mr. Elliott, if you could confirm that proper notice was given?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I will confirm that notice was given.
Wonderful. And did we receive any correspondence?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have not received any correspondence in regards to this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elliott. It's all yours.
Great. Thank you very much. So this evening's meeting is in regards to a zoning application at 808 Birchwood Drive in Midland. The proposed use is for semi-detached dwelling unit and will be constructed by Habitat for Humanity. I can have the next slide, please. So I'm going to provide a very brief overview, knowing that Jamie Robinson, who's the planning consulting on the file consultant on the file, is going to be offering a much more detailed presentation in regards to this application. So first and foremost, the location map is this subject property is located at 808 Birchwood Drive, which is in Ward Two in Midland. Next map, please. For some context, you can see it's existing vacant lot in an existing neighborhood, and it backs onto open space. Next slide, please. For further context, this is the street view of 808 Birchwood Drive and demonstrates the low density nature of the existing neighborhood and the open space characteristics of the backyard. Next view, please. So in terms of the official plan designation, this is currently zoned for residential uses. And you can see the lands behind it is also zoned for open space uses, and we'll retain that designation through our new OP. And next slide, please. So in terms of zoning, it is zoned as an R2 category, meaning low density residential uses are permitted, and the rear of the property is open space. Next slide, please. And to highlight, the purpose of the application is to amend the zoning bylaw in really four succinct ways. The R2 category, which currently applies to the lands, allows for a single detached dwelling. The applicant is seeking a redesignation to the R3 category, which would permit a semi-detached unit. However, there's some performance criteria within the R3 zoning category that needs further amendment. And that includes the lot area, the minimum lot frontage, the minimum lot coverage, and the maximum or the minimum, rather, your yard, rear yard, pardon me, depth. These are modest adjustments, however, are needed in order to allow this proposal to be accommodated within the R3 zone. As council might recall, this is a lot that was owned by the town and donated to Habitat for Humanity a number of years ago. And one unique thing about the application that we're considering tonight is that we're asking to conduct a statutory public meeting, but subject to any comments from the public, we're also asking council to consider approval of the bylaw this evening as well. There's some very tight timelines around some granting and financial considerations tied to this property. So this would be somewhat of a unique circumstance, but certainly allowed under the planning act. So I'm not going to allow Jamie Robinson from MHBC to speak, and he's offering a little bit more detail about the application from the developer's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. If it's fine, Mr. Chair, and I'll proceed with my presentation. If it's okay, I'd like to share my screen to do that.
Please, Mr. Robinson. Thank you for coming this evening.
I just have to, if the clerk could allow me to share my screen, that would be great.
Our deputy clerk is just working on that, and we'll have it up in two seconds.
Thanks. In the mean, but while she's doing that, I'd just like to first thank town staff for their review and attention to this matter. A couple items before we start in terms of representation from Habitat for Humanity. Ms. Kimberly Woodcock is on the call, Mike Parrott and Mick Janney. They are three representatives. I just noticed on the screen that we don't have any specific members of the public. I have taken note of the presentation by Mr. Elliott. I will be as succinct as possible as I'm aware of your agenda items tonight. And, oh, there we go. She's got my presentation. Perfect. So I'll try to be as as brief as possible, but recognizing also the importance of the situation. If you'd like to flip to the next slide, please. Or can I do that? Oh, there we go. If you could even just go to the next slide, that's fine. The location's been covered. Perfect. So just a bit about Habitat Humanity. As mentioned, this property was transferred from the town to Habitat for Humanity in 2016. As mentioned by Mr. Elliott, what's being proposed tonight is that council consider the bylaw later on in the meeting. If there hasn't been no comments on the application to this point in time, if there are any comments tonight, we can do our best to try to answer those, obviously, in advance of council considering the bylaw. If you'd like to flip to the next slide, please. Just in turn, a note on public engagement. Habitat has gone well above and beyond with the minimum statutory requirements for engagement under the planning act, which is the public meeting. They went door to door in the community in August to introduce the application to the various residents. There's a large sign posted on the property, and there's been a number of articles published in the newspaper related to the proposal. And it's, I think, through that community outreach is a result that we don't have any comments on the application tonight. We worked as best as we can in advance of coming to this public meeting and council to satisfy any comments or concerns from any residents. If you'd like to just flip to the next slide. This is a sample of the proposed semi-detached unit. So it is a semi-detached unit in terms of scale and massing. It's a one-story structure. It's intended to be provided for, it's fully accessible and would meet the definition of affordable housing within the municipality. From a massing perspective, it's consistent with existing single detached dwellings in the area, both in terms of its its size and height. If you'd like to go to the next slide, please. As Mr. Elliott mentioned, there's a few variances that are required to the zoning bylaw. First, the property is zoned R2. So the proposal is to take the lands to an R3 zone, which permits semi-detached units, and then also to apply a few site-specific standards specifically related to minimum lot area of 230 square meters, minimum lot frontage of seven meters, minimum lot coverage of 50%, and a minimum rear yard of seven meters. I'll provide some justification in a moment about why each of those reductions is appropriate for the subject site based on the site-specific considerations. But I will, just before I do that, let you know that those standards are consistent with what we can find in other municipalities for semi-detached units and multi-dwelling unit styles. If you'd like to move to the next slide, please. Just a few notes on the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. I won't spend much time on this slide, but it's it is a low-rise residential development. It's fully can, fully consistent with what we see in the existing community. And it's been, the development's been scaled to maintain that character and that existing look and feel of a single detached home, even though it is a semi-detached unit. If you'd like to go to the next slide, please. As mentioned, the the amendments pertain to reduce lot area. Why is the reduced lot area necessary? It's because of the unique housing type, and really, it's a function of the depth of these lots. There it's a 30-meter deep lot. Typically, lots are 33 to 36 meters in depth, which allows for that the lock coverage to be met. And that's a similar comment related to the rear yard requirement. Of note, the rear yard and abutting the rear yard, as Mr. Elliott mentioned, is an area of open space and an area, a wooded area. So there's no impact on the on neighboring properties as a result of that rear yard setback. I would just mention from an interior side yard setback and from a height perspective and from the proposed development does meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw. If you'd just like to flip to the next slide, please. This slide identifies this, the location of the proposed dwelling on the lot. Again, it complies with the minimum side yard setbacks for the R2 and the R3 zone. Each lot proposes to have a driveway associated with it, and there's proposed to be a grassed area between the two driveways. Each unit will be a two-bedroom unit, and they will be fully accessible. If you'd like to flip to the next slide, please. I'm not going to spend much time on the county official plan and provincial policy statement other than to make the statement that our planning report fully reviewed these documents, and the proposal is consistent with the PPS, which is and conforms to the growth plan as well as the county official plan. You go to the next slide, please. From a town official plan perspective, the area is designated and zoned for residential purposes. Again, the amendments to specifically allow that single detached dwelling in an area that's zoned specifically for single detached dwellings. What makes this proposal appropriate based on our analysis is the overall scale of development is that the massing and scale is similar to what we'd expect for a single detached dwelling. If you'd like to go to the next slide, please. There's two real operative policies from the town of Midland official plan that apply in this instance. Those two policies relate to our 3.2.2A and 3.2.6A. And the first policy is sort of a motherhood policy that speaks towards encouraging the provision of a full range of housing types and a mix of housing styles, including affordable housing. And the proposal achieves all of those those objectives. In terms of 3.2.6, that's a policy that specifically identifies that the town will work with with public agencies and private developers to ensure adequate access and a supply of barrier-free housing. So council's consider consideration of this application would be fully in conformity with that policy that is sort of an enabling policy and an encouraging policy for the town to work with agencies such as Habitat for Humanity to address the affordable housing issues and the barrier-free housing limitations in the community. So just in terms of the summary, the application is fully is consistent with the with the PPS, conforms with the various planning documents, including the town's official plan, and in my professional opinion, represents good land use planning. Again, I agree with the recommendations of your staff report, which do recommend approval of this application this evening. The last slide just provides an overview of the of the proposed development and some elevation drawings associated with them. So you can see the scale is a one-story dwelling and similar in scale to what could be expected for a single detached dwelling. So with that, that completes my presentation. I thank you all for your time and consideration of this matter this evening.
Thank you very much, sir. I will ask the clerk if we have any. I will now open the public meeting to comments for the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public at this time?
Uh, no, deputy mayor, there are have no, no calls have come in. We have no comments.
Maybe we could announce the phone number again. It's 705-526-4275, extension. Sorry, Madam Clerk.
2208. It should be displayed. Yes, and it's should be displayed on Rogers.
Wonderful. Well, now, if any council has only questions for clarification, we'll have a motion that's come forward after. Uh, we'll have a motion that's come forward after. So if you um just need some clarification, I'll, I'll allow a couple of questions. If not, we'll leave any uh of uh questions for when the actual uh bylaw comes forward. I saw it. Counselor Maine?
Hey, you Deputy Mayor. Um, I had uh two questions. One question, uh, planning question. The other question was uh for Habitat, which we have some staff, uh Habitat staff, which is great. Uh, the planning question for Mr. Robinson and the design team was, uh, basically we've taken one lot and we've divided into two. Um, and the question is, we talk a lot about missing middle and gentle density and all this stuff, trying to compact-built dense form. Uh, so the question is, what's the boundary or what's the limit we can push a single lot? Uh, because the, the goal is to try to get as many units as possible. Uh, if we were to say. Have a second floor and have four units, uh, is that something that would be considered or is that not within the R3 zoning? Is that more of a. A higher d- density, higher built form uh for elsewhere in town?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor, if I may. Um, there's really no specific. I can't provide a one-size-fits-all answer to that. Every site obviously has to be considered on its own merits and based on the surrounding land uses. In this instance, based on the surrounding built form and the nature of the existing environment. Habitat for Humanity and also ourselves and our professional planning opinion. Uh, it was such that we felt that a a single-story dwelling would be the, the type of built form that fit best with the, within this area. And would be an appropriate intensification for the size of the site and the location of the site. So that's the specific reason. I think on this site, I, I wouldn't want to push the envelope too much more. I think it's an appropriate. Uh, balance between achieving that objective of affordable housing and intensification, but also respecting the built form of the existing community.
Follow-up, Counselor Maine?
Oh, thank you. It was actually a question, a ju- a general question for Habitat. Uh, the question about affordable housing, I know there's a a big formula about sweat equity. A lot of volunteers put a lot of time and effort. Um, just curious about what happens uh to the house, uh, the owners when they look to resell it. There was a question about. Uh, is it sold back to Habitat Humanity or is it sold at a market rate and then therefore basically goes back into the market supply? And kind of loses the affordability uh of, a- as it once had when it was built for affordable housing. Um, it was just a general question that we've, uh, curious to, now that we have Habitat on the line, it'd be great to hear from somebody about that. Thank you.
Someone from Habitat would like to answer the question.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Ms. Woodcock?
Uh. Yes, I'd be happy to. Uh, thank you for the question, Counselor Maine. Um, the answer to the question is that Habitat for Humanity holds the right of first refusal. On all of our homeownership opportunities. So when we transfer title to a Habitat home, we also implement a right of first refusal such. That when the family needs to sell for whatever reason, and that does happen. Uh, we are able to purchase the home back at a predetermined price. Um, that we call invested equity, which is equivalent to uh the principal mortgage payments made. So uh, in a very round example, a home might cost two hundred thousand dollars. If the family lives in the home for five years and then decides to sell. We have the right to purchase the home back at the invested equity, which could be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand dollars. That makes it um a win-win situation for both the family who has moved in. They have. Um, they get to leave with the down payment that they likely didn't have when they moved into the Habitat home in the first place. So they can maintain their status on the property ladder while it makes it very feasible for Habitat to purchase the home back and keep the home in the affordable realm.
The, this is just great. Thank you so much, Ms. Woodcock. Just a quick question then. Uh, so. All of the Habitat builds then are all for affordable home ownership. And we haven't seen any Habitat builds of apartment buildings or even second units and things like that. You basically have been bought, building. Uh, classic affordable housing that people move into, own and uh gain equity.
That is correct. And the operative word, um, the words that you're using are have been. So the mission is currently that we bring communities together to help families build strength, stability and self-reliance through. Uh, safety, scent and affordable home ownership opportunities. However, I have uh had the, the opportunity to speak with some of the counselors and uh your worship. About the fact that we are updating our model. We recognize the need for. Affordable housing in other areas of the housing continuum. And we also are adapting to address volume. We know the need is great. And homeownership is a very important part of the housing continuum and it's what we've been dedicated to for all of the years that we've been operating. But we have now a pilot project running in Huntsville uh that i- is offering affordable rentals. And the intent is that we move forward with a two-pronged approach. So we will be doing both rental and homeowner.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Sorry, if I, if I make, sorry, I could ju- just jump in and just add. It's um, uh, one of the reasons that uh we're consolidating our land bank, which is suitable for single detached. Houses at the moment. So we're trying to um m- make good on all of the donations that we've had, but going forward, we are seeking property that is more suitable to. Larger multi-residential units or buildings, I mean.
Wonderful. Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any uh calls from the public at this point?
No, there are no, no um calls from the public.
All right, uh, I'll ask for last call for the public and uh, Counselor Gordon, a clarification question?
And yes, another question for Ms. Woodcock. Have the uh proposed new owners of this uh build been selected yet? And if they haven't, what, uh, because these are accessible units, which is wonderful. Uh, what role or ranking will somebody with a disability uh have uh over somebody with, with an equal need who doesn't have a disability for these units?
Ms. Woodcock?
Uh, thank you for the question. Thank you. Um, we have currently got an eligibility questionnaire on our website, which is habitatgatewaynorth.com. If you're interested in, in looking at that, that um can give you a sense of uh who we might be um targeting for the houses and who might get priority. Um, we have not started the selection process yet, but the eligibility questionnaire is um active. So people are able to apply at the moment and we are keeping a list of interested people. Um, in terms of the accessibility features, um, obviously this does put. Uh, the people who apply with mobility challenges really at the top of the list because that is the purpose of the building. So um, and we believe that we're going to get a lot of applicants with those challenges. Um, our research tells us that the population in North Simcoe is aging and there are many, many people suffering with mobility challenges. And nowhere near um enough supply with the requisite uh accessibility features.
Thank you. That was exactly the answer I was hoping to hear.
Thank you very much. Uh, Madam Clerk, any calls from the public at this point?
No calls, Deputy Mayor, so I think we're good to move on.
All right, I'll ask counsel if any other questions with regards to clarification. I see none. So we will call, uh, being that there's no further comments, I will now call this public meeting to be closed. Uh, thank you for all for participating. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Now the next, uh, we have a second item, uh, public uh meeting. With regards to development charges by law amendment. Excuse me. I apologize, sorry. I would like to call the public meeting to order. The public, this public meeting is being held pursuant to the. Development Charges Act nineteen ninety-seven regarding a proposed development charges by law amendment. It is proposed that. Uh, uh, sorry, I lost myself. Enactment of the, it is proposed that the enactment of the amendment by council would occur on a date. Uh, subsequent to the public meeting. In accordance with Development Charges Act, council is required to hold at least one public meeting to allow the public the opportunity to review. And provide comment on the two thousand and twenty Development Charges Amendment study. Relating staff reports and the proposed development charges by law amendment. The purpose of this public meeting is to hear from residents and to seek clair- clarity on the proposed bylaw. This is your opportunity to speak and councils encourage you to do so. I will now ask the town's clerk to confirm notification and to note any correspondence received. Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so notice of this public meeting was posted in the Midland Mirror on November twenty-ninth. As well as the town's website and social media. And there were no comments or written, written correspondence received with respect to this matter.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And I will now uh like to call on Mr. Stefan. I apologize, sir. Um, uh, associate partner of Hemson to highlight the proposed development charges by law amendment.
Well, uh, thank you uh very much, Mr. Chairman and um. Members of council. I hope if someone could just wave to see that they can, I can be heard. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this evening, sir.
Oh, not at all, not at all. And I was asked to speak just for a few minutes. I have not prepared a slide deck because I'm, I, I literally intend to speak only for a couple of minutes. Um, but uh, just to highlight what this amendment is about and is the, as your clerk mentioned, this is a public meeting held under section ten of the Development Charges Act. And it's required prior to the town amending its development charge bylaw uh twenty nineteen dash eighty. Uh, the scope of this amendment is very narrow. Um, it arises from the passing of the COVID nineteen. Economic Recovery Act by the province on September the eighteenth, just recently. Um, and this act, among many things, returns certain town services. Which were going to be removed from the development charge funding framework back into that framework. And the legislation also extends the timeframe for municipalities to transition. To a community benefit charge regime for non-eligible services uh to two years from September the eighteenth. And the implications for Midland are that there is a footnote in your development charge bylaw that needs to be amended. In order for the town to continue to collect development charges for general government. Your library, your indoor recreation and your park services. And the footnote also needs to reflect that the parking development charge. Can continue to be collected until the town passes a community charge um bylaw or the end of the two-year transition. So just to be clear, this is a housekeeping amendment uh that's being proposed in order to comply with this recent legislation. It will not alter the development charge rates in the bylaw in any way. And it will not alter the manner in which development charges are collected or administered. It simply alters a footnote in Schedule C. To ensure that you can continue to collect development charges for all of the services that are there, except for parking. And in the case of parking, you will have up to two years to continue to impose the parking charge. Before the funding for parking transitions to the community benefits charge. There's a uh a detailed report on the proposed change that's been posted to the town's website and this uh together with the background study that was. Finalized in January of this year satisfies all of the background study requirements that are required for this amendment. And uh, the clerk mentioned, um, or I think you mentioned your preamble, um, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that uh. Subject of course to any questions we have from the public or from council this evening. Um, it's proposed, I think, that council consider this amendment at its meeting on December the ninth. So um, that's uh, that's all I have to say, but of course I'm ha- I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, anyone has. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate the time. Um, Madam Clerk, is anyone from the public that has called to with, with regards to comment?
Uh, no, Deputy Mayor, we have received no calls.
I'll ask counsel if there's any questions with regards to clarification with regards to this item. I'm seeing none. Uh, we appreciate, uh, we'll allow a, a couple more minutes for the public to have the opportunity to call in with regards to this public meeting. On uh development charges by law amendment. Our number is seven oh five, five two six, four two seven five, extension two-two oh eight. Madam Clerk, uh, how much time? Is there a time we should give?
We're giving just uh one minute since everybody was invited to call in prior to the commencement of the public meetings. So if you just. Give it a minute. Yeah, then we'll move on.
Thank you. So we'll hold off for a minute. Any other questions or comments with regards from council? I see none. And I see uh that we have no public, so uh. We'll allow thirty more seconds and we'll call this meeting closed. And thank you very much for the water. Madam Clerk, I see no more, uh, there is no other calls?
No, Deputy Mayor, no one has called in.
Wonderful.
We're good to move on.
For the comments, I will now call this public meeting closed. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, sir, for coming this evening and uh. Uh, we'll look forward to that um December ninth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our both our public meetings and we'll move on to deputations. Uh, the first deputation we have this evening is from the Southern Georgian Bay Family uh Physician Recruitment Program. And the two thousand and twenty-one funding request. And uh, it's always a pleasure to have Mr. Gravel here. And I see he's go- going to be joined with Dr. Uh, Goliski. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming this evening.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor and members of council. It's our pleasure to be here this evening. And I appreciate your deputy clerk uh moving our slides for us. So we, we can move to the first slide, please. So as you know, I'm David Gravel, uh, the physician recruitment officer, and I'm joined this evening by Dr. Jeff Goliski. Uh, Jeff is a family and ER physician in Midland and chair of our family physician recruitment program. Uh, Dr. Goliski is also the program director of the University of Toronto's Rural Family Medicine Residency Program. Which has four sites, uh, Arilia, Port Perry, Orangeville and Midland. And I apologize in advance if some of you have heard this information previously, but. In consultation with the mayor, we thought it would be a good idea to provide a refresher to council. And somewhat of an orientation to some new senior staff who are listening in. So if we can move to the next slide, please. I'm going to take you back to two thousand and six when Georgian Bay General Hospital divested itself from family physician recruitment responsibilities. And that made the role of recruiting family doctors a community responsibility. The North Simcoe uh area rallied around this cause because we were in crisis. But one-third of our doctors, sorry, one-third of our community, about twelve to fourteen thousand people did not have a family doctor. Uh, volunteers fundraised and ultimately hired me in the fall of two thousand and six to lead the program. The Town of Midland has been a cornerstone of the task force since our inception. Contributing both financially and with uh representative on our steering committee, and that is the mayor, and he attends all our meetings. Next slide, please. Early on, our initial strategy was pretty simple. Uh, as we were in crisis, we were looking for anyone with a pulse and a medical license to practice in the province of Ontario. We were that desperate. Uh, we were very successful early on and we really did avert a crisis. However, behind the scenes, we were developing a long-range plan uh and developing a trusting relationships uh with our physicians. This buy-in from physicians has been critical to our success. They have really worked with us to develop succession plans, so we know when they're going on maternity leave, taking leave of absence or considering slowdowns or retirements. And they really have embraced teaching as the cornerstone to rebuild, to build a robust pipeline of candidates. And lastly, they've really become leaders. Uh, besides Dr. Goliski, some of the leaders we've recruited include Dr. Vic Ralhan. Who is the new chief of staff at Georgian Bay General, uh, Dr. Dan Lee, who's the chief of emergency at GBGH. And Dr. Paige Churchill, the chief of surgery, who is facilitating an expansion of the surgical offerings at our hospital. Uh, next slide, please. So for the first decade of our program, uh, we offered a free community visit to a physician and his or her family to come and join us and experience our, our community. We paid a twenty thousand dollar uh incentive payment for a two-year commitment. We also had a relocation, relocation. We also had a relocation reimbursement and a welcome package from our business community. But after polling our physicians and really having discussions internally on our steering committee. We really determined that money was the last reason physicians chose us. And in two thousand thirteen, we eliminated financial incentives. And that evolution has not impacted our recruitment at all. However, what those changes allowed was our program to be financially sustainable, running on a budget of about seventy-five thousand dollars per year. And speaking of budget, we have become and are a very lean organization. If many of you recall, we built up a fairly substantial surplus from our fundraising efforts and unspent funds. So four years ago, at the, basically a suggestion of the town of Midland. We decided to eliminate community fundraising and draw down our surplus in a fiscally prudent manner. We actually reduced our municipal requests from forty thousand dollars from the town of Midland to twenty-two thousand to fourteen thousand. We have now eliminated our surplus, so we are now a hand-to-mouth organization. So our ask for fiscal twenty twenty-one is twenty thousand dollars. And we are approaching our neighboring municipalities for support as well. Next slide, please. So family physician recruitment is a community responsibility, but we are supported by the province of Ontario in a couple of ways. They hosted jobs portal called HFOjobs.ca, and if you're looking for a position, whether it be a physician or nurse. Basically, HFOjobs is the place to go in Ontario. Also, the province supports physicians who set up full-time practices in rural communities. Through what's called the Northern Rural Recruitment and Retention Initiative, or N three R. And it pays eighty thousand dollars over four years to physicians who establish a full-time family practice. It, our communities of Penetangusheen, Tiny and Tay are eligible. Unfortunately, on the Rurality Index of Ontario, Midland falls just a little bit short. And so a physician setting up a practice in Penetangusheen gets eighty thousand dollars, but setting a practice up in Midland, that physician gets zero. I know, it's totally unfair, as I work for five communities, including the Bozley First Nation. And the fifty-five thousand local residents, but this, and this provincial policy pits community against community. What I can tell you is money is not the reason physicians select our community. It's our location, the people they're going to work with, the expansion of services at our hospital. Our lifestyle, our proximity to Toronto, money is always the last reason, the last reason. So even though there is unfairness in the way the province has set this up, I can tell you that the majority of physicians have chosen Midland. For a variety of reasons, in terms of the people they want to work with, who they were mentored by as medical students and residents. So while it may look on paper as a large disadvantage, money is the last reason why they select a community. If you go next slide, please. So our recruitment program has come full circle. Originally, in two thousand and six, our focus was the recruitment of family doctors. In two thousand and eight, the portfolio of the recruiter was expanded to include the recruitment of specialists at our hospital. Such as ER doctors, surgeons, and e-commerce, et cetera. So we are now one program, but funded separately. The family physician recruitment effort is funded by a variety of municipalities, as well as fundraising events previously. While the hospital recruitment program is funded through the hospital budget. Next slide, please. We have ma- five main strategies for recruitment, but our most prominent one is the Rotary Recruitment Through Education Campaign. And that is supported by the Rotary Club of Midland, and I actually did a presentation with Dr. Golisky earlier today to the Rotary Club. We have also partnered with two medical schools in particular. The University of Toronto and the Northern Ontario School of Medicine, as their medical residents and medical students live and learn with us. And we are actually in the process of expanding our relationship with the Northern Ontario School. We are really a good fit for them. As their students get a variety of experiences here from family medicine, emergency medicine, psychiatric medicine. And working with the French, English and Indigenous cultures and communities. The other benefit that we've struck is that our youth are now considered Northerners when applying to the Northern Ontario School of Medicine. And this was not the case before we developed the partnership with Nausheim. Next slide, please. So our first local student to be accepted to the Northern Ontario School of Medicine is Sophie Thomas. She's the under-tall one in the picture on your screen. Her dad is Midland Doctor, Dr. Richard Thomas. And she's pictured here with our three Northern Ontario School of Medicine students who are with us right now, Frank, Peter and Erica. Sophie is attending the Subbury Campus and is in her first year, and her plan is to come back to Midland. And to follow in her dad's footsteps. So we're really excited to have Sophie at Nausheim in her first year. Next slide, please. So our brand is really our docs teach, but I have to tell you, in my estimation, our docs rock. They have bought into recruitment and education as a strategy within recruitment, and our strategies are working. We've positioned ourselves as one of the premier rural academic training sites in the province. We have people begging to come to our community to learn from people like Dr. Golisky or Dr. McNamara, Dr. Bayfield, and all of our physician preceptors. And the best part is that this strategy is the most cost-effective strategy we could ever have. It costs a lot less than buying doctors. And the results have been staggering. For example, our retention rate from the University of Toronto Rural Family Medicine Program. Is around eighty percent. Really, they come, they learn and they stay. Next slide, please. Our other strategies include peer-to-peer recruitment, where our physicians act as ambassadors for our recruitment program, so they recruit their friends. Due to COVID, we are creating a number of new connections via Zoom, like we're doing tonight. Which is assisting us in pre-qualifying candidates before we even invite them to come and visit us. A number of years ago, I initiated a working group with the recruiters in the North Simcoe Muskoka Lynn. To come together and discuss challenges, trends, needs and opportunities. Recruiters, just so you know, really collaborate versus compete. As our mutual goal is to find the right fit, so our candidates are not just recruited, but retained in our respective communities. Next slide, please. As we are recruiting millennials, for the most part, we have a strong online presence with our website, GeorgianBayDoctors.com. Our website is undergoing a facelift this fall and will be relaunched either late this year, early in the new year. With a fresh look and we're active on social media, Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, et cetera. We are where the candidates are. Next slide, please. So in two thousand and twelve, our National Recruitment Program, Casper, our National Association. Asked Professor from the University of Guelph's School of Rural Economic Development. To look at the economic impact of physician recruitment in rural communities. Dr. Alwyn Lozal used the Windsor Essex region as an example and determined that the return on investment was a staggering one hundred and ninety-four percent. And he commented at our national conference, and I think this is really important. Communities should view physician recruitment as a strategic economic investment and not as a handout. So we invited Dr. Lozal to take a deep dive at the North Simcoe community. And his work determined that the money spent by our recruitment committee, GBGH and Waypoint combined. Provided a return on investment of about a hundred and sixty percent. So physician recruitment is not only an economic driver with its direct and indirect benefits. But it also helps our healthcare in our community. I have shared this report with the Economic Development Corporation of North Simcoe. And I'm happy to forward to your clerk for distribution members of council if they like. So I've got a couple of more slides. If we go to the next one, please. We've been extremely successful recruiting. We've recruited over forty family physicians to join our community. In various facets, whether full-time, part-time, covering maternity leaves or locums when other physicians are taking holidays or. Leaves of abs- leaves of absence, and we've recruited over eighty-five specialists to join the team at GBGH. And while not everyone has stayed due to a variety of reasons, many have. Our track record is fairly remarkable in comparison to our peer communities. Next slide, please. In two thousand and seventeen, I was honored to receive the Casper Lifetime Achievement Award at our national conference in Vancouver. I've been part of Casper as a board member, conference chair and volunteer. And I mentor new physician recruiters who join our profession across the country. What this award really showed me is that we were doing a lot of the right things in terms of our outreach to our physicians. Our marketing strategies, connecting with millennials and learning more about millennials. So this award, while it was presented to me, is a reflection on our community engagement, the engagement of our councils, our physicians and our volunteers. Next slide, please. So like many communities, we are experiencing a gray tsunami. In fact, there are two waves to our tsunami. One, we are an aging community, and secondly, our work for our physician workforce, sorry, our physician workforce. Still has a number of senior physicians who are slowing down and considering retirement. We are working on succession plans with them. However, based on our experience, the replacement ratio to replace an existing family doctor is two point five to one. So based on our expected retirements, population growth, et cetera, we will still need to recruit twelve to fourteen new family physicians. Before we are really stable in our community. So next slide, please, and this is where I have some good news. We are well on our way. We are pleased to announce that Dr. Adrian Stacey, Dr. Julie Karan and Dr. Amanda Murdock have started a group practice. In Penetangusheen, it's called Waves Family Medicine, and they are currently accepting patients through Healthcare Connect. Besides primary care, their practices will include long-term care, palliative care and hospice care. And we are really excited to have them launch their new practice. And we have many more physicians in our pipeline and hope to make additional announcements on new recruits early in the new year. And next slide, please. Dr. Aisha Butt has assumed a family practice from a physician who moved to Australia with her family last year. Dr. Butt is originally from a small town in Northern Ontario and attended the Northern Ontario School of Medicine. She then traveled to Manitoba for Rural Family Medicine, where she also got certified in C-section surgery. So for the past year, she has been part of the expanding GBGH obstetrical and surgical program. And the last piece of the hospital part of that is to recruit two OB-gyns, and we hope to have announcements regarding OB-GYNs in the new year. So some pretty good news from the new faces front here. So last slide, please. So to help us meet our goal of ensuring everyone has a family doctor now and in the future. We need our communities to keep collaborating with us, both in spirit and financially. Investing in our successful program is investment in the health of our community. I really want to thank you for your previous support. And Jeff is the quiet one, but we're both here to answer any of your questions you may have. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you very much, David. Great presentation as always. I, always a pleasure to hear from you guys. And I know I speak for all our community. Thank you so much for all the hard work. Nothing more stress that is put on a family when they don't have a doctor, so it really is. A great work on your behalf and thank you for coming this evening. Any questions or comments with regards to Mr. Gravel's presentation tonight? Counselor Maine?
Thank you so much for, thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks for all your work. I can't believe it's been fourteen years. We've recruited quite a few doctors. I think the one most sustainable way is what we've been doing is having the doctors in town have kids that are doctors. I think it must be genetic, I think. I know Dr. Archer as well, so it's great to see them stay in the community. The question for the recruitment was, two questions was, how have you been finding having to apply to our community grant stream? We've been trying to, you know, create this new community grant system. And then the second question was on livability. Is that, as you were saying, is that? One of the key, that seems to be the key ingredient, one of the key ingredients for recruitment is to showcase Midland's livability. And why people want to live here, because we have lots of great things to do and water sports and winter and we got lots of snow. That type of thing. Is that one of the, is that you're saying that's one of the key components, but not necessarily the number one component?
I'm gonna let Dr. Golisky and I kind of tag-team this, but I can, Jeff's biased, right? Because Jeff is one of those young people that grew up in our community and came back. His dad's a doctor here. But I toured a doctor just today, and when he came to the community, you can practice medicine anywhere. But where do you want to live, raise your family, enjoy the lifestyle that we all live? Is really what's on the minds of these new young doctors and, you know, the fact that we have full four seasons, that we do have a lot of snow. And you can ski and snowboard and cross-country ski and, and a snowshoe and do all those things in the wintertime and then, you know. Flip seasons and boat and kayak and do all those things and still be, you know, an hour and a half to the airport. You know, two hours to, down to a Blue Jay game and live the lifestyle that we all live is what we all sell. Now, having said that, a lot of other communities sell that same rationale that, you know, you're, you know, you're on Lake Huron, but you're only an hour from London. Or you're in Owen Sound and you're only an hour and a half from where, or you're in Muskoka and you're only two and a half hours from Toronto. So I think what differentiates us is that we grow our own. We bring those residents and learners into our community. And we basically, they're here for extended periods of time. And they kind of realize, you know, there's no reason to leave because everything that I really want is here. In particular, the support and the collegiality of the physicians that we've recruited. The, the number is astounding in terms of the number we've recruited. And really, today touring this doctor around, we probably went to six clinics, we toured the hospital. And everyone was singing from the same hymn book about why they're here, how they were recruited and why they've stayed, which I think is a testament. To our success and why, you know, the people that we, our retention rate is extremely high. It's probably around ninety percent. When they come, they stay. Jeff, you may want to add to that, although you're, you're born and raised here.
Right. But I guess just one other small point to add, David. Thank you. It's the, I think are uniquely positioned. Professionally to have real comprehensive care, family medicine opportunities for, for our physicians. So I think that in addition to the great lifestyle that we all, we all agree is, is partly why we're here. I think professionally, it's the opportunities that we have to, to practice the full scope of family medicine as well. So, yeah. There's, there's professional and personal reasons, I think, that we're here.
Wonderful. I know all those other places are great, David, but North Simcoe has the greatest people, so of course they want to come here. So I keep, keep attracting the doctors and we'll keep loving them.
Absolutely. And, you know, obviously I'm biased because I was born and raised here as well. So it's, it's great to be an ambassador for our North Simcoe area.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I see none. Thank you very much. I appreciate, gentlemen, for coming this evening. Any final comments?
No, I just want to say thank you. The town of Midland has been with us since day one and your council and over the years. And have, have been just so supportive and we want to say thank you. And, you know, this is a community responsibility. We do get a little bit of help from the government in terms of the jobs portal and, and some, you know, that funding program. But really, it's about the community partners, whether it be Rotary in Midland or Penetangusheen, the councils. Our, our amazing volunteers who tour physicians around the community. We're engaged and that's fantastic.
I see the mayor had a final comment. Your worship? You're muted, my friend.
You'd think after all this time, I'd learn what that button was, but anyway, goes with age, I guess. I'm not sure. I just wanted to point out that the physicians in the community have been very. Adaptive in terms of responding to changes in peoples in the medical training, medical community there. Their preferences and there's been a shift away from a desire to work in family medicine to more specialized medicine. Despite that, the recruitment team here has been able to overcome that obstacle. And also have used some innovative tools like virtual physician program with the family health team. Bringing patients, I think, I don't remember the number, but it was staggering, really. Number of people who've come into the virtual physician program are now, as we get physicians in the community. Imported back, those who need personal attention are being ported now back to these new physicians. And it's really remarkable. I just, I think it's, these, these folks are doing a fabulous job.
If I can follow up on that briefly, so the family health team launched a virtual care clinic back in February, just at the start of COVID. And it was apropos, and so about seven hundred local residents who did not have a family doctor have been part of that clinic. There's a waiting list of about three hundred, but those seven hundred people have accumulated thirty-five hundred visits in eight months. So that's thirty-five hundred people who did not go to the emergency department for, for care. That would have normally, you know, gone. We already have forty-five, forty-six thousand people that go to our hospital for emergency care. So I agree with what the mayor just said, the physicians have adapted. And that those physicians seen by the virtual care clinic will ultimately be transferred to doctors that we recruit to the community. So there is a continuum of care, which I think is really important, so that while they're seeing someone virtually now, they'll ultimately see someone in person. As we recruit new doctors.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming this evening. We'll look forward to that application, that time of budget. And we'll be sure to help you out in two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Have a good night.
Have a great day. Thank you. Have a great day. Thank you. Next up, we have a deputation from our economic development corporation of North Simcoe. We have Miss Sharon Bay and Miss, uh, Melissa Elston, uh, to do a presentation. I'll remind you, I forgot to tell our recruiters, but you have ten minutes. I'll give you the two minute signal, but we have, um, some time, so we look forward to your presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Chair Deputy Mayor Ross. Your worship Mayor Stuart Strathern. Good evening, Town of Midland Council. What a great presentation to follow. So positive and uplifting. That Mr. Gravel and, uh, his colleagues have done such a fantastic job and, and it's really close to the economic development spirit what they have. I, I'm going to present our achievements in two thousand twenty and our plans for two thousand twenty-one. Supported, supporting our budgeted funding request of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Melissa Alston will present tourism. The reason you are all here, the beauty of the area, it's an EDCNS program. This is a next slide, please. This is our current EDCNS board complement. Next slide, please. Thank you. At our May two thousand twenty annual general meeting, we gained three talented board members. Alex Loren, Ted Salasberry and Adrian Silva Joe. Next please. Counselor Cher Cunningham is the Town of Midland Board Representative. Next. I will present what we leveraged in two thousand twenty with Melissa presenting tourism achievements. Next.
Thank you, Sharon. Well, I guess to start, two thousand twenty has certainly been an interesting year for tourism. That being said, we've been busier than ever, supporting our stakeholders and updating locals and visitors alike as to programs. What is open and options when out and about in the heart of Georgian Bay? Next slide, please. In two thousand twenty, we also printed another beautiful edition of our Heart of Georgian Bay Discovery Guide. And, uh, due to two thousand twenty, our normal distribution channels were altered. So we worked in partnership with the County of Simcoe, North Simcoe Community Futures, the Midland BIA, as well as a Chamber of Commerce to deliver over twenty-two thousand guides to residents and businesses across North Simcoe. And the feedback that we received was really positive. Um, and receiving that discovery guide in the mail came at a time when locals may have needed a reminder about local tourism options. Next slide, please. In two thousand twenty, I also applied for and received a grant of twenty-four thousand dollars from the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario, and that is to promote the Heart of Georgian Bay. Next slide, please. We will continue to grow our Heart of Georgian Bay brand using our various social media channels. Next slide, please. We have just wrapped up a fantastic marketing initiative called Taste Shop and Experience the Heart of Georgian Bay. So that ran in two thousand twenty from October the sixteenth through to November the first. And we created a buzz for participating businesses as well as we drove customers through their doors and gave consumers a great deal. So a quick look at some of those initial stats as I just came back is we had over three thousand unique visitors to taste dot Gbay dot C A. We also had our social post campaign reached over one hundred and twenty-three thousand people. And within that, we had over seven thousand direct engagements in those posts. So that told us that this program came at a great time. Next slide, please. Within that, we were very pleased to have more than twenty businesses participate. And based on the initial stats and the success of this program, we plan additional waves of Taste Shop and Experience the Heart of Georgian Bay in two thousand twenty-one. Next slide.
Thank you, Melissa, for these exceptional programs. Our plans for two thousand twenty were instantly transformed to create opportunity and recovery from the challenges the economy began facing in spring two thousand twenty. Next slide, please. Nurse Simcoe experienced positive job growth since two thousand fourteen when EDCNS began. Although we are in a global negative economic health situation, many North Simcoe employers remain actively seeking staff for growth. We embraced and drove powerful positive change to transform, to support business recovery. We are now back at rebuild phase two of COVID nineteen upon us. Next slide, please. As two thousand twenty began, we were ready to ignite and market our value proposition for investment attraction. We even won a national award for the agriculture and agri food economic profile. Next, please. Our transformation to business retention and expansion began with the launch of a business recovery program, which other Ontario municipalities replicated as a model for their recovery programs. Next, please. Extensive local media coverage included the outcome of our survey to businesses on their recovery plans. Who indicated North Simcoe is open for business? Next, please. An economic development municipal task force was created and chaired by Town of Midland Counselor Cher Cunningham. We have held town halls with our partners, the county warden, local MP and MPP and business and community support organizations. I also joined the Town of Penetangwishing on a bi-weekly municipal task force. These discussions open communication amongst all our municipalities, all levels of government, all our support associations to keep providing timely updates to support business. Next, please. We continue to grow, to work with Georgian College, marketing skilled trades and training programs. We engage our manufacturers one-on-one and broader with County of Simcoe events such as the two thousand twenty manufacturers forum held last week. Next, please. I, the I Love My Local campaign ran in the summer and fall, supporting business retention. A radio media promotion aired for sixty days on the dock one oh four point one FM. Next. Look, local businesses sponsored a program with over fifteen outstanding awards worth up to thousand dollars each. Awards to influencers and a video will be released this month and sent to Town of Midling Council. Next slide. We held an appreciation dinner for participants of the We Live It, You'll Love It program. This program delivered weekly videos of why our local businesses chose Nurse Simcoe as their location. We filmed over forty businesses. Next, please. These are some of the videos we recorded and distributed over social media channels. Next. You can see all the videos on our dedicated YouTube channel. Next. We began filming local attractions such as first light at the end of two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, during the transformation to business retention and recovery, we decided a softer approach promoting the Heart of Georgian Bay would work well due to the COVID nineteen and stay shop local programs. The series now attracts employees for our businesses who are desperate to add staff to grow their operations. Next. Next slide, please. I applied to an international organization, the International Economic Developers Council. And EDCNS was the recipient of this honor amongst thousands of entries for the We Live It, You'll Love It program. This award acknowledges the program through international eyes as well as markets the area to attract investment as the Town of Midland is announced across the globe, USA and Canada. Next. Next slide, please. We engaged OMAFRA to work with us to run focus groups and we joined forces with the County of Simcoe. We spoke with our four CAOs and planners and each of our four pillars. Nurse Simcoe businesses and elected officials responded to an online survey. The outcome was four goals for our strategy, which will be incorporated into our two thousand twenty-one work plan. Our strategy will include County ED, EDO strategy deliverables as always. I attended the County ED Strategy Update last Thursday, November thirteenth on behalf of our four municipalities with the County and Economic Development Divisions of the other twelve municipalities. The County Economic Development Subcommittee chaired by your mayor Strathern will be receiving the county strategy and work plan in the coming months. Next, please. Melissa will now present the two thousand twenty-one tourism work plan.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, so to expand on what Sharon just spoke to, um, we at the Heart of Georgian Bay will focus on executing the objectives that came about from that strategic planning. And we are going to put emphasis on supporting our local tour, tourism operators as well as a marketing projects that will highlight the assets within the Heart of Georgian Bay. Next slide.
In two thousand twenty-one, we, we, in two thousand twenty, sorry, we began rebranding. A follow-up to our Invest Canada Community Initiatives Grant, which will launch in two thousand twenty-one. This is an example of the EDCNS Lago and Farm Fresh Lago in the image of the recent farm crow. Next slide, please.
I'll, I'll remind you, two minutes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Directed by community input, the vision for our two thousand twenty-one recovery plan is recover, rebuild and renew. EDCNS will support the development of conditions that enable a strong recovery from COVID nineteen, ensuring our business community remains resilient and thrives and positioning nursing the top and value added investment. We were eighty, eighty, twenty retention and expansion versus investment. And we've now switched because of COVID nineteen. In two thousand twenty-one, we worked with tourism. Next slide, please. In two thousand twenty-one, we merged with tourism and industry pillars as they are converging sectors. Our budget is two hundred and forty thousand for programs across all industries. Our ask to the Town of Midland is the same as twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Next slide, please. As the Town of Midland has a new CAO in treasure and as a refresher, I'll provide a brief summary of funding since we began in two thousand fourteen. The county funded, funded EDCNS with four hundred and thirty-two thousand startup capital, including thirty-two thousand from the four municipalities with the intention of gradually reducing county funding while the municipalities added funding. County financial support ended in two thousand eighteen. In addition to grants from federal and provincial programs, we've operated with revenue from the form North Simcoe municipalities in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. Thank you for your confidence in EDCNS. Of the total four hundred and five thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars of municipal funding, hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fourteen is the request from the Town of Midland for two thousand twenty-one. Next slide, please. Thank you, Town of Midland Council, for your continued support of economic development and tourism. I welcome your comments and your questions.
Thank you very, very much for the presentation this evening. Soon as we get a lot opened up, but any questions or comments with regards to the presentation from council? Counselor Maine?
This was a, a great presentation. Thank you so much for all your hard work. It's great to see this organization grow, uh, from its infancy and having, you know, the little conferences that we used to have. Questions on, a couple of questions. So, uh, tourism is obviously a big question mark and I, the, I think I heard somebody say two thousand twenty-one is the year of staycation. I think the premier might have said that. And maybe this time next year, we might be launching our welcome back strategy as we ramp up again as we exit the, the pandemic, uh, crisis. I just love all the digital content. I, I say it every time. I just love the pictures, you know, you know, the Y Marsh of all these great profiles of all these businesses. I just love, I just love all the digital content. That's just fantastic. So I guess the question, one is the tourism question. Do you guys have kind of a two-pronged approach for next year to try to basically heavily focus on that staycation Ontario market? Uh, and then I have a follow-up question. Uh, thank you.
Sure. I'll answer if I, if I may go ahead. We are absolutely working with our stakeholders and attractions within the area to make sure that we offer, um, offer that opportunity for residents of Ontario to come to the heart of Georgian Bay. Folks aren't going down to Florida this year. They are not, uh, traveling overseas. And we have a wealth of opportunity here, um, to invite them up to be able to experience something pretty special and pretty amazing. Through that, so absolutely we will be targeting staycationers in two thousand twenty-one.
Oh, thank you. Uh, thank you. Yeah. Well, this is a good time of year to go to the Y Marsh. The chickadees are very hungry and they even have a new great horned owl, which is just gorgeous to see. I can't tell you how much I love the Y Marsh, but, um, question for Mr. Bay, uh, on revenue side of things. We do so much great work on that, you know, blue collar skilled trade, uh, manufacturing recruitment. Is there a thought of, um, asking some of the manufacturers? I know some of them have been very generous with, uh, some of their executives volunteering times. Is that something that they maybe contribute the manufacturing towards that specific program? And secondly, it sounds like the municipal accommodation tax we were talking about the last couple of years is probably going to be pushed back a couple of years, just until all the dust settles. And I'm guessing that tool, the tourism tax tool would then be able to be used for tourism initiatives, uh, primarily. Thank you.
Sorry, Sharon. You available? I think you might be. There you are.
Deputy Mayor. Deputy, Deputy Mayor Ross, I'm sorry. I, I missed a lot of Counselor Maine's question. My, I seem to be frozen, but now it's unfrozen.
We'll ask Counselor Maine to repeat it.
However, I, I, I did hear you were discussing the municipal. Oh yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So it was just the question was about, um, have we reached out to some of our local manufacturers to contribute for that recruitment program? And then the second is, um, obviously we're going to be very cautious and analytical if we roll out a municipal accommodation tax. So that sounds like it's going to be pushed back a couple of years and there's certainly no rush, uh, or appetite, some may say.
Thank you, Counselor Maine. If I heard you correctly, I think you're discussing what we call the blue collar cool campaign where we received funding from our manufacturers to promote, uh, hiring of jobs. We haven't done that because of sensitivities due to COVID, so we didn't want to go too far with that right now, but we will be coming back to that. Right now, we're working closely with the County of Simcoe to engage all manufacturers across the county as we did last week at our manufacturers forum to discuss their needs and issues during COVID. So during the COVID time, Counselor Maine, we really had to change our way of thinking to be sensitive to, to hiring people or pulling them up and to do stay shop local programs. That's why Melissa has this fantastic taste shop program. And we did a I Love My Local program which Cher Cunningham really headed up. So we are going back to the blue collar cool campaign, but as, as I hope that answers your question to some extent.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I can't imagine what you, uh, what you guys are going through. So, uh, we greatly appreciate all the hard work and hopefully, uh, things will be back to normal sooner than later. But I thought that, uh, six months ago, so, uh, let's hope for not another year. Your worship?
On the button this time. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just, uh, in speaking with, uh, I see people coming into the building with a bunch of diagrams and blueprints under their arms. Some of these folks are institutional, commercial, industrial developers who stopped by and said that, uh, they would be interested in a dialogue with, uh, both planning and economic development. said that they would be interested in a dialogue with both planning and economic development to present what they see perhaps as, well, certainly who they see is looking to move over time and what the impediments to them moving or the incentives to them moving to this area might be. And I'm just wondering if there's any intention to develop that sort of a relationship with that community.
Absolutely. That is one of our strategic goals for 2021, to strengthen that situation. And we had a meeting with the four planning directors, I believe, last week or so, and we were discussing that zoning and bringing out the developers, working closely with them. As you know, we've been working with a developer on Highway 12, and he is now opening, opening that to rezone it to industrial lands. So that's a great thing for us.
Cherry?
For the whole of North Simco and Town of Midland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you're unmuted. Any other questions or comments with regards to presentation? I see none. Thank you very, very much for coming this evening, and we greatly appreciate all the hard work. I know all the four communities, can't thank you enough, and let's hope that we're back to normal before we know it, and we can start planning for some wonderful things this summer. Any comments?
Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. Stay safe and happy holidays.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, we have a reports or other items withdrawn from the consent agenda, and we have a motion from our public meeting that CSR-2020-39808, Birchwood Drive zoning bylaw amendment, that staff report, CSR-2020-39 zoning bylaw amendment application number ZBA07-20 for 808 Birchwood Drive dated November 18th, 2020 be received, and number one, that's subject to result of the public meeting. So zoning bylaw amendment application number ZBA0720, respecting the lands at 808 Birchwood Drive be approved, and if the zoning bylaw be passed. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cunningham and Counselor Post? Any questions or comments? If I could just make a quick comment. In 2016, when council the day passed this bylaw, this is exactly the type of thing that we were looking to do, to add some affordable housing. It was a piece of land that was sitting, and I know that there's a council file who was a big advocate for affordable housing, et cetera, and Counselor McDonald and are very, very happy today. So this, to me, is why we donated the land, and I'm so glad to see this moving forward. So any other questions or comments? I see none, all is in favor? Wonderful. Next up, we would have our CEO provide a COVID-19 update. Mr. Dino? Thank you very much.
And thank you, members of council. I'm expressing the appreciation of certainly the town administration for all the deputations we just heard. That's great to hear from our community partners. I'm here to give you more sobering update and a serious one, certainly as we all know on what's happening with COVID in the town and from what we're hearing from the health officials. So thank you for this opportunity again. I won't repeat a lot of the numbers that I'm sure we're paying attention to. The one important number, which, you know, we did reflect on at the start of this meeting, was we had a death in North Simco, and I think that's one too many, as I think we all know. So this is, this is wreaking havoc. We all know that it's hitting very close to home. I think we all appreciate that, and we're all really encouraged to take this seriously. Our region is in the yellow protect level, which is the new framework that the province has put out very recently, so that is called the protect level. If you watch the trends, the epidemiological trends and the pressure on our healthcare systems, we're quickly moving towards next level, which would be orange, which would be the restrict level. And each of those levels have different protocols and restrictions that would be in place, and the local health unit also has the ability to level on even more restrictions on top of that. So depending where the situation goes, we could be seeing more enforcement happening and different restrictions in place to help us clamp down on what's happening. So that's, that's the current situation, and hopefully everyone's paying attention to that. At the town, like many of our community partners who that you've just heard from, things are very, very busy. Certainly dealing with the adjustments under the new framework is taking some time, you know, as we work with our partners and the other municipalities, work with the health units to understand exactly what happens in each of these different zones and how we need to adapt our services. So that's taking place. We're helping provide guidance to the many groups and community partners that use our services to help them understand what's going on and how we will adjust. So that's, that's part of what we're working on, certainly planning our budget, as you're well aware, is consuming a significant amount of time, as well as looking at the requirements to apply for some of the funding that's been announced. So those are certainly big things we're taking care of. We're also looking at planning for the winter and holiday seasons that are upon us. We got a bit of an introduction to that over the last few days, and trying to figure out how, under the new framework, we can try and celebrate as safely as we can, to the degree that we can, and that tends to change on a daily basis, but we're, again, looking for creative ways to do that. We're getting ready to open our new downtown, hopefully soon to vehicle traffic. So I know a lot of people are excited about that. I do want to make everyone aware that we are aware that Dominion sign is not correct. It is not Dominion Street. It is Dominion Avenue. It has always been Dominion Avenue, and it will be Dominion Avenue. I just want to ensure everyone who's noticed that, but thank you for pointing it out. We're doing a lot of consultations with the public using virtual formats. I was able to attend the one last night on wastewater and was really encouraged by the feedback, you know, that we got from the public. Andy and I were talking about the participation that we saw at this, at this event, and again, very encouraged by the number of people who are participating. We, of course, miss being in person to do these kinds of events, but encourage that people are embracing the virtual aspect of it. So that's great to see. We're also continuing to deliver enhancement to our services, which is always important, and you'll see an announcement today about some enhancement we made for transit riders. So again, embracing, you know, digital tools to make things more convenient but also safe. So in this announcement, we announced the ability to load your cards from the, from the safety of your home, you know, again, providing people that, that type of convenience. There's other features we're going to be announcing on the transit front as well that will, will be making things hopefully easier for residents, things like transit mapping so they can, you know, see where transit is at any given time. So those things are things that we've been working on for some time and glad to see them come to fruition. So great work by our team to deliver those. The other thing we're paying attention to on transit, of course, is the safety of our transit drivers. So you'll see that we're starting to install some protective barriers for them using plexiglass. A lot of these supplies are difficult to come by during the supply surrogates for these types of things, but we're trying to do that as quickly as possible, but want to make sure that those, those people are taken care of. We're also continuing to deal with little instances that Mother Nature tends to deliver. So over the weekend, we did have a pretty severe windstorm, as we all know, and we received some snow, so I wanted to give a shout out to our operations team and our fire department and our police, who certainly helped us maneuver through all of these incidents, you know, when trees are down and there's some dangerous obstructions limiting, limiting people's mobility. It's important that we take care of those quickly, so those teams, we're all working in concert to make sure we're returning to services quickly. So thank you to our operations team, the, the police and the fire teams on doing that. There's also been, I think if you're following the news, there's been some very promising news on the vaccine front, which is, which is certainly heartening for all of us. I think we're all looking forward to moving on from this. But I think if we all continue to be extremely cautious, take the situation seriously, as I think we, we all are, because I think we're doing a relatively good job in Midland, but it's very fragile, as we know. One case can set this on fire. So, you know, continue to take it seriously. Those three Ws, wear a mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance are really important, basic things you need to do. If you could consider the flu shot, that would certainly help in relieving some pressure from, from the health system, should there be a need to use it. So we'd certainly encourage you to do that, and I'd also encourage everyone to visit the Simco Muskoka District Health Unit website. If you're looking for factual information or good guidance on anything, that would be the, you know, authoritative source I would go to. They've tried to make it very user-friendly. They're working hard around the clock to, to make sure you're aware of the situation, so I'd certainly encourage that. So that's the extent of my, my update, Deputy Mayor. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. I see Counselor Prost and Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Prost, you have a question for our CEO?
I do. I want to go back to King Street. Is there a reason that it's not opening up as it finishes? It's like between Bay Street and Dominion could be opened, and even Dominion to Hugo. Is there a reason it's all staying closed?
Yeah. Through you, Deputy Mayor, I'll ask Andy to chime in and give you the specifics on it. The one thing I will say is, we're receiving feedback, and certainly we've heard it from a number of counselors who are asking if there's the potential to open the street in sections. The reason the street has remained closed to date is because we need that, that type of throughfare to conduct the work that's being done safely. It may not look like work is being done in that lower part, but there are reasons why we need access to it. So Andy's been working with our contractor to determine if we can open up sections of that street without compromising the overall project schedule, because we do want this project to stay on time and on budget. I mean, they've done an absolutely fantastic job in doing this. We just want to make sure we can continue to live on what we promised. So if you don't mind, Deputy Mayor, I'll ask Andy to make further comments.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council and the public. On Friday this week, we'll be opening up the north section from Bay Street through to Bay Shore. That will be opened up. There is work still to be completed in that area, but given the turn of the weather, we won't be able to finish it this, this winter. So we will be having to close it again for short periods of time once we start working in the spring next year. The bounce of the street up to Young Street will be open on November 30th. The contractor, again, we're in that section with the weather changing, well, the asphalt will be done, sidewalks will be done, and we'll be, council approved the bylaw on traffic earlier today, which means we can turn the new signals on and start to commission those. So that commissioning will take place next week, and given we've, we've changed our plan for the work we're going to finish this year, there is, at this point, no reason we won't have that street open on November 30th.
Wonderful. Great news, Council. Mr. Campbell, thank you so much. Did you have a follow-up, Ms. Counselor Prost?
No, I don't think so, but it will be on time, like that's what they're saying right now.
November 30th is the day that we're hoping to have it open at this moment, at this time. Hopefully, the weather cooperates and we're, we're able to follow that schedule. Is that correct, Dan and Mr. Campbell?
Yes, that is correct.
Wonderful.
Okay, actually, I do have one quick follow-up. I didn't realize that we'll have to finish things in the spring. Is that going to be a further cost?
Mr. Campbell?
Like at the, at the bottom part of King Street?
No, it's always been planned. We had substantial completion, it's called, for the end of this year, which is what you're basically seeing today. We always had planned next year, we have all the plant material to go in, we'll still have some of the street furniture to go in, and the work that we're, is still to be done on the road surface is the crosswalks. And those crosswalks right now, it's asphalt, but the design is to have the paving stones similar to the parking stalls going through at the intersections. So you'll see a crosswalk with a paving stone at the mid-block connection on King Street. That will be at all of the intersections. So they have to go in, cut the asphalt out, put in concrete, put in those paving stones. The big closure next year will be when we do the work right at Bay Shore and Young, and that'll be about a five-day closure to, to put that paving work in at that intersection. And all the other intersections, we'll have to put those crosswalks in next year. So they thought they were going to get that done this year. We didn't, but I'm very proud of the Arnott Construction and the, our consulting team and our staff team. We got a lot of work done this year on that road, and I'm really proud of everybody to get where, where we are at this point. We're not surprised by what we got done, but we're very appreciative that the weather held out and we got the work we did, and we're, we're on schedule the way we planned.
Congratulations. And it looks fantastic, so congratulations. Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think, actually, I was watching for Counselor Gordon to raise his hand, and I'd like to follow him, because I think what he's going to say, I have something complimentary to ask about afterwards. So if you wouldn't mind having Counselor Gordon go first.
Actually, I wasn't even sure. I was going to say, because Counselor Prost pretty much nailed the one that people have been, you know, talking to me about was the, you know, why isn't this the north end of the street up being opened up by now? So anyway, I've been, you know, trying to fill the line as best I can and explaining the issues about the bylaws and, and, you know, still belonging to the, or not until they release it, safety and everything else, all these important topics. So we appreciate Counselor Post bringing that up. I did have a couple other ones. Long as we're talking about King Street, though, are we still going to be doing Percy's Peaks, even though it's significantly narrowed? And if we are, are we going to be teaching people where to park and how to park so they're not smashing the bollards? You know, that's sort of, you know, bumper cars, you know, almost like a pinball game down there in the wintertime. And also, since we talked about crosswalks, Rainbow Crosswalk, what's the plan for that? Where is that going? We haven't really talked about that for some time. So those are my, sort of my three. I can lob that one over to Mr. Campbell, and I'm sorry, Counselor Cunningham, if I didn't say the right one, please go ahead.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, Percy Peaks, that's where we plow the snow to the middle and then lift it. The street is not narrower than before. It is the exact same width, so people think it's narrower. We've only narrowed the cross streets at the intersections. King Street is the same width it's always been. So operationally, our challenge is just how do we plow snow with these nice stainless steel bollards all up and down? And yes, to Counselor Gordon's comment, who is going to be the first resident that runs over one of those? So we'll, we'll find that as we go. We do have some, some more in stock, and, and that will be one of our biggest learnings. People are used to backing into a parallel stall, and they touch the curb to know when they have gone too far. We don't have a raised curb anymore. So people, if they back up too far, there's nothing to stop them except those bollards. So hopefully, our residents will have to get some promotion out there once we open up the street. But again, I, you know, most people don't want to damage their cars, so they will be respectful, I'm sure, but I know, maybe we'll have to have an award for the first person who knocks one over. As far as the Rainbow Crosswalk, that, that part of it is really, you know, a location. We've, we've talked in the past around whether it might be up on the library area or down on Bay Shore. With the construction going on, we've just set that, that project aside, and over the winter, we've, we finally got our contract engineering staff finally got hired a month ago, and that's one of her projects to work on with the LGBTQ community this, this winter, and then we'd be able to do some painting of that in the spring when the snow melts. So that project's still on, on plan, there's, you know, councils approved the budget, and it was really just, you know, King Street and all the construction there this year delayed the other project.
We'll look forward to that Rainbow Crosswalk in the springtime, and We'll look forward to that Rainbow Crosswalk in the springtime and we'll remind all our residents that there's lots of parking behind on, off of First Street and Midland Avenue. So if you're a little hesitant of the new system downtown, there's definitely lots of parking on our side streets and, and in our parking lots. And we encourage everyone to shop local. Counselor, oh, sorry, I'm going to go to Counselor Cunningham and then the Council again. Counselor Cunningham, I hope Mr. Counsel Gordon set you up if, if, I hope it's all yours.
He did not. Counselor Gordon has been working for some of our residents who are older residents who are looking to walk inside of the North Simcoe Sports and Rec Center. He's been on top of this, coming up with ideas. I was sure that was what he was going to talk about. So there is a concern with COVID, with winter coming on, that getting out and about and getting some exercise is going to be a challenge. One of the things that we're looking for, is there a way to have our staff at North Simcoe Sports and Rec Center oversee a walking program for our seniors so that there could be registration, tracking, tracing, all those pieces without them mingling within Ascanonia. Ascanonia is really risk averse to opening their doors to a program because at that point they could end up having some bottlenecks and congestion there. Also at our seniors council, we discussed that this morning. What other concerns our seniors are exhibiting around winter and COVID? And one question that was asked was for those seniors who don't want to be indoors walking, who want to, you know, have the outdoor safety. Is there a place that we could plow and maintain as a plowed spot for our seniors for walking outdoors? Whether that is a set of sidewalks, whether that's something within the park that they could know they could get to safely and be able to get some exercise outside socially distanced in the open air. So single question, two locations, and I was sure that Counselor Gordon was going to set me up just beautifully for that. So Mr. CAO, if you have any updates on that or ideas on how that could happen, that would be lovely.
Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor, to, to Counselor Cunningham and, and to the rest of the council who I know are interested in, in issues that affect, affect all of our residents and certainly what I've heard from people who want to be able to have a place to, to walk is important regardless of their age. Certainly we, we've reached out to Ascanonia, not only to, to test with them how they, how they felt about offering these types of services to the seniors, but also see if there's any interest on their part to help them coordinate it. Because under the framework, there's a whole coordination aspect to offering any of these services that, that takes time and effort and having the participation of groups who, who do this certainly helps manage the resources in doing that. So that's how we've been doing it with a lot of our, our activities. Ascanonia and certainly absolutely understandable. And you, you said it yourself, Council Cunningham, you know, they're quite cautious about, you know, taking, taking their demographic into anything like this. So they're being cautious on that front. We are working with YMCA, as I think you know, and that includes the other municipalities in trying to determine what the YMCA can do to offer their services. We're hoping to bring an update to council before the end of the year on what we could do to assist them. It's with the YMCA right now for their consideration. I think they're taking a close look at it. So that might be an alternative, hopefully if, if we can, we can agree on how that help might, that help would get them to open their doors. But I do like your, your idea about opening up something outside as well is something that we, we've been kicking around to, we want to see if we can find the right location to potentially offer that type of, of service, because there might not be a requirement to do as much control when you start to bring people inside. So all of those things are on the table. I think we're really placing a lot of focus on trying to solve the YMCA situation because it offers a number of programs I think people might be interested in. And we certainly want that important part of the community to, to remain available. So that's where a lot of our effort is right now. But we're not neglecting those other needs. One of the reasons why we've, we've kind of kept one ice pad in that rec center is to allow us to have some flexibility with, with that other pad that doesn't have ice on it. You know, it does give us some flexibility to offer different types of services during the winter. So that is one of the considerations that we have with that, that physical space. So I hope that helps. I don't have a definitive answer for you, but I can tell you that we're, we're certainly looking at all of them.
Thank you very much. Follow-up, Counsel Cunningham? No. I have Council McGinn and then I'll have Counsel Gordon. Or did Counsel Gordon, does this involve the conversation we're having?
Uh, no, it's a couple other questions, although I do thank Counsel Cunningham for bringing that up. I know just for some background, we've been having back and forth emails. You know, I've been on Mr. Dano's case on this one for a few council meetings now, and then there's been more emails back and forth. And of course, Counsel Cunningham, being our rep with the seniors, was a clear fit to dial into this. So I'm kind of lobbed it to her and then I actually forgot to mention it tonight. So thank you for bringing it up again. I know Mr. Dano is not being obstinate or sticking the mud about this. It's not moving as fast as we'd like it to be. I'm sure to his chagrin, you know, we keep talking about this and they're going to have to explain it again, but anything we can do to get the seniors. I guess I'm starting to talk now, aren't I? Sorry with that. Anything new to get the seniors of, a place to, you know, to, to be able to walk safely that isn't a shopping venue would be lovely. And to Counsel Cunningham's, you know, point about outdoors, one of the things we'd like to do next year in Little Lake Park, you know, budget allowing is to put the Christmas lights in Little Lake Park in some capacity, which would mean plowing that walkway. So that is quite a flat walkway and that would be a lovely place to send our sidewalk plow down perhaps as an outdoor walking path this winter. So they don't have to walk on the traveled roadway, which is going to be open all winter and hopefully we see lots of cars going through. But, so that might be a place, walking along Low Lake Park and sort of sets the framework for the lights that we hope to see there next winter. Anyway, I digress. I'll wave my turn too. I got a couple more, they're not doozies.
Counsel McGinn?
So I, I, I thought this was an opportune time to mention something about Percy's Peaks. And what did it?
We're, we're having a hard time hearing you. You're coming in and out? I'm not sure if there's something. Go ahead, try again. I apologize.
Okay. I'll, I'm going to try talking really slow. That might help. I often talk too fast as well. Is that, is that easier? Okay. Percy's Peaks, if you could, if, if people who are watching and if we together could, you know, visualize if we didn't have Percy's Peaks and all of the snow was plowed to the right. And then you park your vehicle and you have a passenger. So A, you're parking in a snowbank and B, your passenger is stepping out into a snowbank. Having the peaks in the middle means that there's one spot and it's not, you know, near, it's, it's not where you're going to step out into. And it allows the space in front of the storefronts to be maintained in a different manner. And the other thing too is, is that to remove the snow, you have it in one spot. Instead of attempting to weave in and out and yes, we're in. So this is the other opportune moment is that we now are in our winter. Please do not park your car on the side of the road. Time. But sometimes it happens. So if you can imagine the snow being on the right-hand side and there's a parked car. I'm up in the middle of the night. I'm up at odd hours and yes, I actually, you know, if I'm out and about, you do see this. So Percy's Peaks is there for a reason. It's not just that it's easier for, it's not that it's just easier for operators. And thank you very much. You're nodding your head. So I got it right. Um. Carry on, Counsel Gordon. Thank you very much.
Hold you class begin. Counsel Gordon, you had a couple?
Thanks. Yeah, I got more. I mean, this, this becomes like the catch-all, the catch-all part of the show. This is great. We got to have this all the time, not just during COVID. So this is like, you know, ask the, ask the press or ask the CEO and stuff. Pay and display parking. When are we going to be seeing those ticket spitters installed? And how much longer will our free parking remain downtown or anywhere? I guess because once ticket spitters come, there's no free parking.
Plan for, for ticket spitters to be installed, I presume?
Yeah. Yeah, we're working with the vendor. The contract's been issued and it's a delay in getting the equipment right now. The equipment will be installed on King Street and other parking lots next, next summer. That is the plan. And if there's changes on our rates and everything, that will be coming to council separately over the winter.
Wonderful. So nothing at this point until it's summertime. Great.
Counsel Gordon? So for, free parking remains until the summer? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that, that should be lovely news for the folks downtown. And the last one has to do with sidewalks again. Who is going to be plowing those wonderful new awesome sidewalks on 93 that are part of the Trans Canada Trail now in the links?
If I understand correctly, Counsel, sorry, Mr. Campbell?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the, there's two portions of the sidewalks on County Road 93. One is in front of the businesses from basically the hospital up, up to Young Street. You know, we'll be plowing those, those winter, this winter. It is the town's responsibility. The county partially paid for that work. They're asking us for 1.8 million for the construction of those sidewalks, which we haven't agreed to yet, but that's a budget issue we'll, we'll get to. So we have to maintain the sidewalks. The portion from the hospital up to Penetangishing, we aren't planning to plow that this winter. Penetangishing also was not planning to plow their section of, of that trail. But again, if council wishes us to plow it, that's a change in service level and we'll have to see how we could go about crewing and having sufficient equipment to plow that stretch of road.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure we're not going to be struggling with all this new sidewalk that we have to plow. And that part that isn't being plowed then that heads on the way to Penetang, is that like fair game for sleds to be able to operate on now? Do we know? I know it may be a county question, but maybe no.
No, the county is not putting a bylaw against it. Those, although they built it, it's up to the town to maintain that trail and whatever bylaw we put against it. So I, at, at this point, because it's new, we'd have to see if that's included in our, our ban for motorized vehicles or not. I'll have to check with our bylaw department and, and, you know, I, I don't know the answer to the question, but all I know right now is we aren't planning on plowing it.
Okay. So my last follow-up then is if, if we're not going to plow it, then to make it accessible in the winter time with the winters we get, just throwing it out there as food for thought. If we let the sleds pack it down and, and invite the groomer to do it, people can walk that thing without us having to plow it and someone else is looking after it, namely our, our friends at the Georgia-based Snow Riders. So I don't know if that's feasible or not, but now that, you know, the weather's coming and you hear them goose in those things as they start them up in the garages, that, you know, it might be an, an interesting consideration to try out. For what it's worth.
If, if I can just make a one comment, the, the contract with the, the Snow Bill Club is, will be coming to council at the December meeting. And Mr. Barrio is writing that report right now. And I'm not sure if he's had any discussions with them around grooming that section or if they want to add it to their trails. So we'll, we'll take that back for consideration.
Well, I, I'd be remiss if I don't ask this question because I won't sleep all for the next two weeks. I heard you say that the county put the trail in and now they're asking for 1.8 million? After the trail is in, is that, I heard, I just need to know that I heard that correctly or I'm hoping I did.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. It's way off topic. The topic was COVID and we were warned by our clerk 10 minutes ago that we're off topic.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I apologize. All right. Well, I'll have to get back to that one. Thank you, Counsel Chesky. Any other questions with regards to COVID? Mr. CEO?
If I could just make one parting comment, just, just to, just kind of reinforce, get us back to the, the topic that I was invited to, to update you on. And certainly I don't mind taking any of the questions that, that are come up. I know they're certainly topic, at top of mind, but again, if we all pay attention to what's, what's being communicated, I think we all understand the seriousness of what's going on. As I said, the trending right now is not looking very good. You know, I think those communities to the south of us are, could have some very severe restrictions in place. And I think the restrictions in our own area could be ramping up very quickly. So again, the message around COVID is, is exactly what I think you're hearing. Let's be extremely cautious. Let's continue to practice all those good protocols that we need to. Um, let's continue to practice all those good protocols that we need to. And hopefully in the spring, one thing we did not mention about King Street is, we certainly want to celebrate. And we want to celebrate this work for this project, which is probably one of the biggest project this town has ever done. And in my, certainly from my perspective as someone who's worked on a number of projects, has been done unbelievably well, incredibly well, uh, in terms of managing this project on time. And you'll certainly hear soon about how it's been managed according to the budget. Uh, there's lots of interest in, in what's being done at, at all kinds of levels, um, which is great. Uh, and we, we certainly deserve to celebrate this as a community and thank those people who made this happen. So, we certainly all look forward to that. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. CEO, and apologize for getting a bit off topic there. Um, tough. Thank you councillor Chesky for bringing us back in line. Uh, any notices of motion? I see none this evening. Announcements, any general announcements with regards to, uh, upcoming events? I have, uh, your worship, councillor Dowder, and then councillor Gordon.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to point out that, uh, at seven o'clock on the 25th, which is next week, next Wednesday, actually, there will be a virtual tree lighting ceremony, um, in the, at the new spruce tree, which is outside, uh, outside the library at the Hizzode Park. Um, it's, uh, going to be broadcast by Rogers throughout the, uh, the, the, Christmas period, and I invite you to, uh, tune in and, um, and, uh, enjoy the, the actual tree lighting event. I, it's not a, a general participation event due to COVID, which is unfortunate because it's a beautiful new tree there, uh, on a beautiful new main street. So, but, uh, we'll do our best to convey the sense of, the tree lighting through, uh, the virtual, the virtual event. Thank you.
What's up? Councillor Dowder?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, an announcement, uh, on Monday, the 23rd, which is next Monday, at 11:00 AM, Midland Honda opens its new building. Uh, they're having a ribbon cutting and they've asked me to invite, uh, members of council to that ribbon cutting. So that's Monday, uh, the 23rd at 11:00 AM, Midland Honda.
Wonderful. Looks like a great new building. So thank you councillor Dowder.
Okay.
Councillor Gordon?
You better watch out. Santa Claus is coming to town. Our reverse Santa Claus parade, Saturday, December 5th. Uh, it's in Little Lake Park. I wasn't really sure. I thought it was going to be spread all over town, but when I saw the notice, I was happy. Because I think that's the best spot for it. Uh, that's where all the floats staged historically anyway, before they made their, turn north on, uh, King Street. So, uh, that's Saturday, December 5th, 1 to 3 o'clock, Little Lake Park Road, the floats and the big guy will be there. Uh, the idea is you drive safely through. The floats are stationary, you're not, uh, you, you're free to walk, you know, your normal social distancing, wear a mask, all the usual, outdoors is still safe. Uh, where you can travel in your car or, you know, whatever. But we're having a Christmas parade, a Santa Claus parade. It's the reverse parade. Like kudos to our, uh, our CEO for pointing that term first time I heard it. Now it's all over the place. I don't know if he borrowed it or made it a thing. But, uh, you know, you look at bigger municipalities, uh, either, you know, well, for whatever their reasons, canceled their Christmas parades. Logistically, they just couldn't pull it off. And Midland's doing it. And I'm really happy that council, uh, supported this and staff can do it. And a big shout out to all the volunteers that are doing their, uh, best to keep the Christmas spirit alive and, and for the kids, uh, having the Santa Claus parade. So right on, please, uh, join us and everybody on Saturday, December 5th safely, between 1 and 3, Little Lake Park Road for the Santa Claus reverse parade in Midland.
Well said. Any other announcements councillor Maine?
Uh, thank you, Rush. Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, I just want to give a big thanks to, uh, Jane, uh, Wilson and the engineering, uh, staff at JL Richards. I think it was. We had a really great, uh, public information council, uh, session on, uh, the wastewater master plan. So, I really look forward to that coming before council. Um, I, I was luckily enough to be able to ask all the questions I had. I probably asked way too many questions. Uh, but it was really, really informative and, uh, a lot of the questions that the community had about our system, uh, are going to be answered. And so, um, really look forward to that master plan coming forward. You can already look at the technical document. It is online on the engaging Midland website. Um, it's basically the 90% draft and they do want people to take a look at it and give commentary, uh, because it is important. Uh, there's lots of dollar signs attached to it. And so, we'll have to figure out how to, uh, pay for all those pipes in the ground, but it's, uh, very good, very great, uh, meeting last night. Um, thanks for everyone giving lots of props to, uh, King Street. I just wanted to say with, the American Black Friday and Cyber Monday, which seems to be more of a Canadian thing. Again, please think of the downtown and local, locally owned businesses. King Street is open, even though we're getting the, uh, street almost open. A lot of the stores downtown do have contactless sales methods. A lot of them do have online shops. So if you are going to be shopping online, check out your local stores first. Uh, and that's just, uh, and so on that King Street, I also wanted to give shout-outs to all the people that were involved in the steering committee. I've been, just loving spending time down there on, on King Street and even hearing people as they walk around the corner, uh, you know, in amazement saying, wow, look at King Street. This looks, uh, really amazing. Uh, so it's great to hear. So I know, um, uh, councillor, at the time councillor Strathern and I, we were in some marathon meetings with councillor File and some, uh, you know, some, uh, committee members, uh, community members. Uh, we took the time to try to get sure, uh, try to get every detail right. So, special thanks to councillor File and all the volunteers, Scott Campbell, uh, Andre Sosh, uh, Mark Hamlin, I think Archie Meredith, uh, Steve Maurice as well. Heavily involved in that process. And so it's, uh, it's been a couple of years, but it's really coming along now. Uh, and, uh, finally, as my sister is calling me, I just wanted to give shout-out to the, uh, Georgian Bay District. They made the city, city news last night, as they're adapting a play that's going to be in March 2021. Uh, so it was great that our local high school is making the news and they're adapting to COVID and they're doing some fun stuff that we always love to see. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you councillor Maine. Councillor Cunningham?
I actually just wanted to say, similar to councillor Maine, Christmas is coming, the snow has fallen. That means it is time to shop local. And I know councillor Oshewski and I are, are looking at what percentage of our gifts can we buy local? So that's a challenge that I think councillor Oshewski threw down at me to say, okay, let's put our money where our merchants are. And as soon as the snow flies, the merchants are like, yes, please. Right? So.
I love that saying too. Put our money where our merchants are. I love that.
Let's do it. And I just challenge everybody. Let's aim for a hundred percent local gifts, local services, local donations in somebody else's name for this Christmas season, this holiday season, whatever you're celebrating. Buy a gift, support a local merchant.
Well said councillor Cunningham. Any other announcements? I had a couple if I could. Uh, first of all, I wanted to, uh, give a shout-out to the, our Midland Legion and Royal Canadian Legion, uh, on the great job they did at the SynoTAP on November 11th. Um, I know there was a few people that attended, I, and not one didn't have a mask on. Everybody's social distance, so I have to give our residents a, uh, kudos, good job and, and doing your part. And, uh, it really was a somber occasion. It was too bad. We couldn't have had a, a regular celebration as we always do on November 11th, due to the fact it was probably the best day we've had in the last 15 years. Um, so nice, so beautiful. We could have had the greatest turnout, but I just want, um, our veterans and the people that made our life, the way it is today, to know that we were at least thinking about you on November 11th. Secondly, um, please join your worship and I, I will, uh, your worship will be at the cell, sorry, the Canadian Tire. We're doing, helping out with the Salvation Food Drive, sorry, uh, Toy Drive this weekend. Worship, uh, will be there on Saturday from 11 till 3 and I get the joy of doing Sunday, 11 till 3. I pick Sunday, the Bills aren't playing, so, uh, I thought, why not? But I appreciate that, your worship. And, um, so we, uh, ask all our, uh, residents, please come out and support. It really does, uh, this time of need in December, it broke my heart to open up the Free Press, sorry, the, uh, local paper, I almost said the Free Press, uh, the Midland Mirror, to see, uh, 125 families in our community are looking for support with regards to the holiday season. So, um, if you can, I understand it's a, it, it is a hard time for a lot of people this time of year, but if you have the means, please sponsor one of those families and do, do our part for our community to give a kid a Christmas. Uh, I saw councillor Chesky, last word?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. I guess it would be a waste of space on my face if I didn't bring up, uh, November this month. Uh, it's certainly, uh, you know, a, a joint effort between a lot of people. I see a lot of fancy mustaches out there. Uh, big shout-out to Stefan Walma and Tiny. He's done a great job raising money for the cause. Uh, the cause is men's mental health, but this is a very unique year and I think everybody's struggling a bit. So, reach out to the people you love and, uh, ask people if they're okay and, uh, keep the conversation going. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Chesky. Uh, any others? I see none. So we'll end this, uh, part of the meeting moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Maine, that the committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? So Carrie, your worship, all yours. And thank you, everyone.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I have a motion moved by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor Oshewski, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of November 18th, 2020 be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. The next portion is, uh, motions for which notice was given. Uh, Deputy Mayor, I have a motion here that I'd like to discuss. So may I turn the meeting back to you for this, this portion?
Please. Thank you. Did you want to read your motion?
And? Thank you. Uh, if you don't mind, yes. Um, moved by myself and I need a second or if I may, um, councillor Dowder, thank you.
I think we'll all have seconded.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so the motion reads, the council here and supports the council's task force on affordable housing committee, and homelessness action committee, the committees to work, with staff to establish an initial allocation of $100,000 within the 2021 budget for consideration, for the purpose of establishing housing and transitional housing policy and initiatives, within a range of affordability and within a range of neighborhoods, and the planned set housing that provides options for people at all stages of life. If I may just say that this is really a placeholder for this amount of money within the budget process that will all be engaged in in February. And I will say that, uh, it's likely that the committees will be, also submitting an operating budget. I've spoken with councillor Gordon about that. Uh, we're in agreement that we will be doing that. This funding is really, uh, in anticipation of an announcement that we hope to, will be, happening shortly. And I think we will all be very surprised, pleasantly surprised by it. So, I would encourage us to ensure that this funding goes into the budget because it's, uh, there's an opportunity coming, I believe, that will be, um, um, significant. So I would encourage everybody to support this for the, that reason. Thank you.
Any questions or comments councillor Gordon?
Thank you. I threw my money background up. Actually, I did it a bit early there when we got the, the sticker shot there about that sidewalk. But, the money background is for, uh, for this motion. And, uh, the depiction basically is our small bills. These are little twenties and fifties, you know, which, uh, you know, that's still money. It's real money. But this is what it looks like when the community pitches in towards something that matters to the community and is ultimately, for the best for all of the members of our community, is that in that impact to our ratepayers are twenties and fifties. Uh, not big brown notes or the ones we never see, the thousand-dollar bills and stuff. It's the little bit that all adds up. And this placeholder, you know, it's not a license to go out and just blow it. Uh, same thing with the discussion about putting a small, like a meager budget around the homelessness action committee, which meets for the first time in a couple of weeks. Uh, so I encourage you guys to jump in on that. Uh, but just for incidentals, for the costs, uh, to make these things work, not to pay ourselves or to pay the people that are, uh, on the committees. This is to advance the, the much needed work. Some really interesting stuff's happening with the Affordable Housing Committee. It's on YouTube. For heaven's sake, uh, just really, and it's not like that, it's not going to make your eyes glaze over. They're really interesting little meetings. Uh, and so amazing stuff is happening and I'm looking forward to the amazing things happening with the homeless and act, homelessness action committee. So the, putting this placeholder in for our budget is important. And I just want people to know that it's not, uh, just an opportunity to drain the, the bank counter reserves. This is money that will only be spent if it needs to be spent. And it has to come to council, uh, for authorization along the way. And there are wonderful, you know, updates that we look forward to getting in the immediate future. Um, they're going to have positive net impacts, but the key here is it's all little bits of money. Work isn't lost on us. This is, tax dollars. This is your hard earned, harder in twenties and fifties. Uh, but all those small contributions from all of our residents are going to add up to something amazing for Midland. So I needless to say, I support this whole art of it.
Thank you councillor Gordon. Councillor, uh, sorry, Mayor Strathern, do you have, have a comment?
No, I just, uh, I just liked the background behind councillor Gordon. It's, uh,
Any other questions?
Vicious.
Councillor Maine?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just, uh, we keep having these amazing, uh, fast-paced, uh, affordable housing, meetings. That's, uh, the pace of our former mayor Gordon McKay. He moves quickly and he's very thoughtful. So, we've having these very great meetings. In the last meeting we had yesterday, uh, we have our consultant on board, uh, Mr. Lebreck. And one of the topics that we were talking about is constantly investing and communicating what we're doing. And so, by allocating a budget, um, towards affordable housing, a lot of the sites that we're going to be talking about, municipally owned sites are going to need a little bit of fixing up, a little bit of investment, some zoning, some, you know, some review. So, all of that is going to pay dividends as we invest into these properties. So, uh, and there's various different things. It's a lot of background research and a lot of, uh, behind the scenes work to get these things up and running. So, uh, as everything has a dollar sign attached to it, um, is, this is an important investment into affordable housing, uh, to be able to allocate some budgetary, amounts to that will mean that we'll be able to kind of accelerate, uh, some of these projects. So, uh, I fully, fully support this. Thank you.
Well said, councillor. Uh, any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Looks like, uh, so move. Nice job, uh, your worship. And I'll turn the meeting back over to you, sir.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and thank you council. Uh, you won't be disappointed. I can almost guarantee you that. So our next item is, uh, sorry, I just need to see where I am bylaws. There we go. So, um, I have a motion by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Downer, that the following bylaws, bylaw 2020 dash 64, amending zoning, sorry, to amend zoning bylaw 2004 dash 90, as amended to rezone lands at 808 Birchwood Drive. Bylaw 2020 dash 65, regulate parking, standing and stopping of motor vehicles within the town of Midland. And to repeal bylaw 2020 dash 16. Bylaw 2020 dash 66, appointment of municipal auditors to the town of Midland and to repeal bylaw 2014 dash 88. Bylaw 2020, excuse me, dash 67, authorize temporary borrowing from time to time to meet current expenditures for the fiscal year ending, December 31st, 2021. Be passed and enacted. Council, you've heard the, uh, motion. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That also carries. And now the motion moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by councillor McGinn, that bylaw 2020 dash 68, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session held November 18th, 2020, be passed and enacted. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries. And the motion everybody's been waiting for, by councillor Downer, seconded by councillor Cunningham, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at, 9:24 PM. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you council. Uh, great discussion. Be safe, stay well.